Thank you.
Thank you. So, sorry.
I had someone wear like that and like fill in the background.
Debbie, Debbie, Debbie.
Oh, do you want me to get her?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's nice to see you again, Robin. It's nice to be here. Although I think we'd all be happier at the beach or somewhere.
On a day like this.
I know, the weather finally seems like it's not too windy and...
But we normally like to schedule these on the roof guards and...
I was walking around town hall looking for the way out there.
Unfortunately, the bar staff are on vacation. Oh, this year, so we're going to do it.
I guess the grant will cover that. Got lovely green lawns out there.
Within likely with this much rain because give it another three weeks and we'll have restrictions on the water.
But it's nice to have green spaces around the center of town. We have a, we need switch, there's a... Hold out the wrong item, don't be my phone, I mean my glasses. We have a field that everybody, even at school uses, youth sports people use. It's sort of the de facto dog field.
Is that the one over the river?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Everybody here that's coming? It would be a good surprise. Thank you, Robin, for coming back.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for rejoining us again.
Yeah.
We're about to ask a few questions and I believe you've received some advance, am I correct?
Yes, I did. The sort of scenarios.
So, by way of starting the form station, in addition to ensuring smooth functioning and continuation of the town departments, the town has a number of in-process projects. The selectmen would appreciate the experience and guidance of the successful candidate for the interim town administrative position helping to get these projects moving forward. We are doing our best to keep remembering that there is a word interim in the title here and have reasonable, realistic expectations. So, we're going to do something somewhat similar to what we did earlier and have various select persons ask questions. Do you want to begin?
Sure. I know we've already gotten this, Robin. I'm just going to read it for the sake of our audience numbers and the people watching the video. So, the first project that we would like your input on is the implementation of a document management system. The status is, is that a contract was signed with General Code in April to lease its Laserfish software to scan and store the town hall documents. Laserfish training was held for four departments in May, the town clerk, the planning department, the board of selectmen's office, and the land use departments. A plan to prioritize and schedule the scanning of the documents by department with limited resources has not yet been developed. So, if you could please speak to how you might work with the departments to develop a plan to help move this forward.
Yes, I brought a couple of examples. I didn't print them all out because they're so extensive, but I brought some examples for you to see. I'll say that I've had a lot of experience in meeting deadlines and setting and meeting deadlines. Two examples come to mind. In Long Meadow, I implemented a charter, so I had to set a deadline for each of those. So, we had to... And there were some within the language of the law that we had to meet. And also, when I started in Long Meadow, we had an administrative consent order from DEP. It was extensive. It was vengeful. And so, we were at risk of being fined if we did not meet those. So, I had to put together an entire spreadsheet to identify the dates and what needs to be done and who needs to be involved. So, typically, when I approach a project, I bring the stakeholders in and then we identify priorities in terms of, in this case, what documents are the highest priorities. And I would say my priorities would be which documents are most vulnerable. Some are really historic documents, so they're the most vulnerable. Which documents do the public, does the public most often ask for access to? Now, imagine, I'm going to guess that in scanning and storing these, you have a searchable base. In other words, people can put in... Okay, so if you have the most vulnerable and then you move on to the most research, that should cut down on staff time having to do that research. And then finally, the most space because we all know that storage space is at a premium. So, that is the approach I'd probably take and I'd work with these departments to talk about those and to work as a team to identify what those are. Now, knowing that we have limited resources, I would work to set up a schedule and I'll show you something. I'll pass these around and you don't have to share, but... And they look complicated. But what I did is, is sort of a modified Gantt chart in terms of projects. And most departments have times of the year where they're the busiest. So, what I did in Long Meadow and both IPSWITCH was ask the department heads to fill in where, what they're doing in various times of the year. DPW might be getting the blades ready for the winter, but then they have some downtime, so would that be the time to do it? And this is an example from the Department of Public Works' annual work plan from Long Meadow. I've got a similar one in IPSWITCH, it's somewhere in their files. But it talks about fiscal of nine projects and fiscal 10 projects. And it gives like the work time periods in which they'll be worked on. So, because I think some people feel, oh, I'm so overwhelmed. Well, let's look at your work schedule and let's find those pockets where you may be able to do some of the time. You just do some of the work, you know, for example, the town clerk's office, you don't want to do it during voter registration or that period right before elections or, you know, you need to find those periods of time where there's some breathing room. I also, depending upon the scope of the work, I might talk to the finance committee about getting some assistance scanning. You know, I know we're limited, but in the case of some communities, I know they use senior volunteers or the workup program and they'll train people to do that. So, I think there are opportunities to look at that as well. And depending upon the enormity of the project, it might be, for example, like our wayfinding program in IPSWITCH. We'll do this much this year, this much next year in sort of face of end. So, that would be my approach on that, to sort of look at their work schedule and say, okay, let's do it in May. Can you set aside, you know, three hours a week to do that and then check in with them? It's kind of how I follow projects through. Is that helpful?
Yes, and I love that chart.
And the thing you said at the very end, which is really critical, is and check in with them because...
Right.
I think the key is people need to know they're part of a partnership between the administration and the doers that is constantly being reassessed. So, if a problem comes up, it's like the day after we saw we had a problem, we're talking about how we can fix it, not when it comes out in a quarter or a month later.
Yeah, and I think as part of this, you would say, okay, we're going to do the birth records through, however the town clerks, you know, is it through years or, you know, we'll do the birth records this now and we'll do this. I also have a question, which I didn't, I thought about afterwards, after I left, is are there department head meetings here?
Yes.
Okay, so they're right over there.
Monthly department head meetings.
Well, I had weekly department head meetings in IPSWITCH, like on Mondays particularly because then you get to start off the week together. You know, what's on your docket this week? This is what the board's going to be talking about. The other thing I did, and I don't know how I can handle this, but I would have board agendas for like the whole year laid out and then slot in items. Now, I don't know how you do it here, but I know some communities just do it as they go. But there are some recurring items that the board addresses and you can block those out all, license renewals, things like that. And so, I would, I worked with department heads when they had presentations to make or, for example, to, they might come in periodically and report to the board about their goals, their progress on the goals. So, I would start at the beginning of the fiscal year and run it through and I see you have a calendar set up already, but I don't know whether you have agenda items slotted in that. But I really like to follow those through and find the space because you don't want to have... I say no good decisions get made after 10:30 at night. Maybe they do here, but many instances, they don't. So, I like to balance the board agendas with the chairman so you don't get overwhelmed and department heads can really have their attention taken in. So, that was just an aside. You have another question?
I just want to elaborate a little bit. You will be asked three questions here this afternoon and you've already read those. My opinion, I wouldn't expect you as an interim town administrator to finalize any of this stuff. I just, I want to make sure that we keep them moving because they're ongoing practice.
Well, I think if you have a chart, something like that, that can be shared with the board and shared with the department heads and check in with them, you know, monthly or, you know, in some cases, if they want to report at a department head meeting. And the one thing I found very good about the weekly department head meetings, which, you know, not, there are things that take them away, I understand that. But often, well, certainly my experience in both Long Meadow and IPSWITCH, you know, the departments are out there doing their work, but when we got them together, they had to listen to what everybody was doing and all the meetings were under an hour. So, it wasn't like it was a big production. But often, somebody would say, oh, I want to work with you on that. I didn't know you were doing that, but we have this going on, I want to work with you on that. So, it tended to pair people up or create teams where they might stay after the meeting to say, to plan on working together.
And I'd just like to say that, as we said before, relatively new to this town administrator form of government, still learning very much. And one of the things that I'm listening for is we could certainly, we've been learning a lot and we're going to learn better and we're not a badly run town, we're a well-run town, but there's a certain amount of extra effort. How can I say, we can go as fast as many other towns, but we're burning more fuel in the process. And I think in terms of organization, planning, and efficiency, as well as improved communication, there are best practices that we can learn from that we have not implemented, in some cases, perhaps not even thought of. So, I, for one, am kind of interested in the notion of what are some new aspects to our process as a town of government that we might want to consider implementing? And as an interim, it would be very helpful to take advantage of the experience that Mr. Stu, as an interim, would bring to the town. So, those are tremendously important add-ons beyond just kind of keeping the ship on a straight course and not getting rocks.
Yes, I always say, you know, you eat the cake a bite at a time. You don't try to shove it all down at once or you, you know, they talk about in the Arctic expeditions, 20-mile march. You didn't do more or less. You did that, you committed to it, you got through it, then you weren't burned out the next day. So, part of, I know I've been guilty of it myself, especially when you're trying to get the momentum, that you really are wearing yourself and department heads down. And I think it's important that people know, you know, okay, so this date, we want to hear a report back on how your, you know, scanning is going. Tell us what the resources you need, how are you making progress? But not to burn people out in the process because I've never, never experienced, as a local official, any less work coming in. You know, there's always more, more regulations, more federal regulations, more state requirements. We don't sit here and make these up. And so, it's important to set a tone and a plan that is not burning people out as they draw along. That's kind of my approach to things.
A little follow-up to what John said too, though. You may have some ideas that you suggest that we do. That does not mean in my mind that you need to implement them. Simply the fact that you spend some time here and you say, why do you do things like this? Have you considered that? And sometime in the future, then if we get around to doing it, you don't have to implement them all, but we seriously would appreciate your experience.
Well, I'll, as I said, I'll leave you on that.
Ideas of best management practices.
But for example, the way I structure working with the board and the chairman, you know, I like to plan out your meetings for a year. You know, that doesn't mean they won't change, but if you need a report or if there's a project coming up or something that really needs your attention, you don't want to throw it in there when you have all these other things. I always work with department heads, don't throw it in at the last minute. Give it some time and I want the board to be able to read the material two weeks ahead of time. Don't just, here, here it is.
That would be a luxury.
Well, I think it's only fair to the board because you're asked to deliberate on this. And for example, if you say, okay, we want to, we want to follow up in two weeks on this, that goes right on the next agenda. Now, that is a suggestion I would, I would suggest you consider for implementation because at any one time, you can look at that document and say, oh, here's what we've got scheduled in December and January and, you know, it gives you sort of a look ahead.
Somebody once said, "Time is God's way of keeping everything from happening at once." And it's necessary to plan those things out and to respect in that process the priorities of those things that are coming due. And making that decision weeks, months in advance is far superior than, we've got these four priorities, this meeting, we'll put these two off and hope we get time on this.
Well, see, that, this is how I practice. Now, you may not agree with it or you may agree with it. If you agree with it, I'm happy to work with you on it. But that's how I practice because you can't say, oh, my gosh, we have all these grants due and we've got to talk about them more. And it's, departments should be working on a schedule that they, and that they know also when they're expected to do a presentation.
Thank you.
The next question is, is appropriate because at your last meeting with us, you talked about signage issues in downtown Ipswich.
Yes.
So, I'm going to start with the question. This is about adherence to a sign bylaw. One of the board of selectmen's 2019 goals was to ensure adherence by businesses to the town's sign bylaws. Since over the past year, the town has seen a number of signs appear that are not in compliance. A letter was sent to businesses last week requesting they review the bylaw, it was attached, and ensure compliance. An article on the subject will appear in local papers next week. Following receipt of the letter, some businesses have called the town hall asking for support determining if their signs are in compliance. Please speak to your recommendations for next steps, helping the town and the businesses ensure that we, that they adhered to the sign bylaw procedure.
So, one thing I know about bylaws is it's a lot of words in the communities, people. I often say to my department heads, when it comes to things that are complicated, is give me the comic book version, draw a picture. I've often done that for town meeting warrants because, you know, giving examples and dimensions, I think that's very helpful for people rather than just throwing in a bylaw. And I don't know what went out. This was a big issue in Long Meadow and so we worked with the building inspector and the planning board closely on it. I'm not exactly sure what signs you have going out. Are they temporary signs? Are they, well, we had, of course, the first thing is to ask for compliance. And sometimes that's difficult. Second, and I would suggest that scheduling an informational forum, if you would have done that. And having somebody from the planning board, the CBA, and the building inspector. I assume the building inspector is a force.
Yeah, yeah.
Having them there for that, having it go out on, you have load boxes. Yeah, and doing that where there's a Q and A and pictures to be had. Sending up a follow-up with pictures and suggesting that people make appointments come in. Those would be the early approaches. Then there's the approach where you go out and just pick them up. And we did that in Long Meadow. We told them we could find them behind the police department. And they often went and then we put them up.
There's two or three that I want to get rid of right now and every time I drive by, I want to...
We'll point them out on your way home.
We put them in the dumpster. And then we particularly had problems with some that would put in, you know, like, nothing was allowed in the right of way or the tree belt area. And we had these realtors that jobs didn't get and they put in these blue signs. Well, I'll tell you, we, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're stickers that sometimes they put on cars that are repeatedly violated and you can't get those stickers off. And I'll tell you, we tried that with these signs and you better believe those signs never went back there. Somebody's paying for those signs, so there's always the nuclear option of going out there and putting on this plastic that people are paying for. But you warn people, you tell them, this is coming. You really don't want to get to that point, but it does make a statement and people do begin to pay attention when they get that, you know, fluorescent sticker on there that says you're violating, but nobody can read what's underneath the sign. So, there is this face-in approach because you have people that don't understand and then you have people that, too bad.
Thank you. I'll say we have both answers.
Again, you have three questions and we're going to do this.
I'll take notes on that one.
This one has to do with their goals and objectives. The board of selectmen will develop their goals and objectives for next year, for next fiscal year in July. Board of selectmen would like the departmental and employee objectives to align with the support and support the board of selectmen goals. A rigorous alignment and status update process has not been followed. Please share your recommendations to help us ensure goal alignment.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. Before you set the goals, do you ask for input from the department heads? I always think that's a good idea because they know what's happening on the street. And then you can, if you say, "street improvements," then you can, if the, if the DPW says, "we need to, we need some more money for potholes," or whatever, you can align that into, or you can dismiss it. You know, somebody might say, well, we want more flowers planted on the green. But the point is, is you can hear what they have to say and if you think it's important, you can align that under your goals. And then when you go to build a budget, then you know you have these things to build into the budget. And see, a lot of times, I don't think, people think that, you know, they'll set goals, but there's really not a plan to fund them. It's not just a matter of people doing them, but in some cases, it's a funding issue. So, when, in IPSWITCH was a town manager town, I prepared the budget, but what I would do, and the selectmen ultimately decide to approve it or not and then go to town meeting, but we would say what the goals of the departments were back here and hopefully they would align with the boards. You know, because, for example, the board would set its goals and then we'd go back and say, okay, DPW, we need to, tell me what you need to do this. And that way, the budget is tied to your objectives and your goals. And I think that's important. I'm going to pass around another part of the document again, not the full thing. This was my workroom one of the years in Long Meadow. Again, it's a similar chart, but over here, you'll see like E3, E4. These would identify which of the board goals this was aligned with. Those goals would be on a separate document, but it was a way for me to track my own progress. And I think the department heads can, you know, when they put in a fiscal request, they can, in a budget, they can relay it back to a board objective. So, that is kind of the approach that I take. You don't want to make it too complicated, it could become overwhelming. But I think you can certainly say, if you have five goals and then underneath that, you see steps that the department directors can say, gee, if I had $2,000, I could get that accomplished, you know, I just need this much more. Or, you know, we need some more summer help, for example. I, you know, it depends what your goals are. But at least you would have the opportunity of knowing the cost of that. You can decide, oh, we don't want more summer help, we'll just have to labor on. You get to make those decisions, but you also know what the department heads are looking for and they can take your goals and build that into the budget. That's the way I would do it.
Robin, what have you found to be effective as a way for the departments to stay in touch with you to give you progress update on how this is coming or if they're running into difficulties or?
Well, I would periodically, maybe once a month, one-on-one with department directors. And we'd sit down with a document similar to that, say, how is this going? Has this changed? You know, they might shift around their annual work plan. I always like to talk about an annual work plan. Now, people that really use that are people like the DPW. Fire, they do occasionally have that, they're more like response oriented, but if, for example, if they're buying a piece of equipment or replacing hose, every, you know, year, they might have a hose replacement schedule. At least we know when that was. There are inspections they have to do related to licenses, you know, they can put that in there. Police, very similar, but again, those are more response departments, but if they're working on projects, they can insert their projects in there. But, you know, DPW, planning, some of those departments, even the town clerk, you know, I tell them, do not tell me you're answering citizen phone calls. That is not part of your work plan. What your work plan is, is in the fall, what's your schedule, if you have a fall town meeting? If there's an election, you know, what are the critical dates and the time periods? And then in between all that, how is your timing allocated? We know that people are generally busy, but in order to accomplish your goals, maybe you block out five hours a week, three hours a week, or something like that to begin to insert those in there. The way I would approach.
Robin, as you talk about this, goals and objectives, I think we made, in some senses, more of an effort to be sure nobody was left out. We had 10 board goals and objectives last year. And I prefer to look at them as town goals and objectives because we're in service to the town, it's what you're looking for in the town. But a lot of them, and I think the strongest and most important ones depended upon what I would call cross-departmental issues and sometimes things that were driven by outside or citizen concerns. One of them, other than the fact that the taxes are so high and many people justifiably complain about that, we've heard lots of things about downtown revitalization. The highway department is putting new pavement down there, that's fantastic, but that is not directly part of the town goal. The town goal is the more general one for many years. IT, we've discovered a number of issues where we're kind of behind the times. We need to both fill in and plug some leaks, but we also need to get with the times so that we can be more efficient and so on. And that's across all departments. And I would add, again... And I would add, again, because I don't think it's one of our goals here, but some of the whole idea of a consistent performance management system, which addresses every department and every individual. Anything in particular about the kinds of goals and objectives that are sort of driven by an outside sense of what we need, what will have to involve all the departments in that, adjust your approach at all?
I'm not sure if I understand any of the question. Are you saying, for example, that, I assume you have somebody that does your IT work?
Volunteers.
And an outside vendor.
And we're looking for an outside, yeah, we have an outside vendor. We're looking to go beyond that. That's one of our priorities.
And that's critical. And some communities are working with the schools on that in terms of a joint IT person. Schools have different IT needs, but still, there can be some crossover. IT really needs dedicated commitment.
Well, and it's across the entire town. There are some issues that identify with the website. We're just in the process of having committed to buying some replacement workstations because we're using Windows 7 and things that are going to, sun settings and those sorts of things. But there are a lot of other pieces in terms of integrating it. There are some very clear questions as to whether we're getting the security that we think we're getting for our hosting solution. And there are some indications that we're not. The vendor we have for our town website hosting is pretty porous and has had many of its other clients subject to ransomware demands and so on, millions of dollars. And we need to start thinking proactive about all that. But that's across everybody. We don't have IT. And sort of when you talk about goals and objectives, that isn't just to sit down with department heads. It goes beyond that. And I'm wondering, what's the beyond that that might come to?
The beyond that is, would be, you know, here are some options. And whether it is your interim or your permanent, they should say, here's the recommended option. That was a real issue also in Long Meadow and where we combined IT with the schools and also an if switch. But we had an if switch, a person and a half dedicated to IT. And one works with the library a lot because the library has a lot of technology they're Libraries are heavily technology dependent. And so, you know, you need to develop a plan for, and a budget for changing out your hardware and your software, which we did integrate into the budgets where I've worked. You have to treat it like it is any other infrastructure because that's exactly what it is. You know, just wait, patch, and replace streets and storm drains and whatever. This is the same thing. So you need to develop a budget for that and the resources, including the personnel, whether it's off-site or on-site.
That's one area where we're actually in good shape ahead of the curve. Donna Rich was spearheading with us an evaluation of all the hardware and software in the building where we stood. And she identified that the workstations were out of date and that the software was going to be unsupported. She's actually in the process right now. Three new servers have been installed and 26 workstations are going to be purchased and installed. She's putting the plans together now to implement that over time. So that's one area that I think we're in good shape. Were you driving towards, John, the communication across departments to put together and align objectives because some of these things span multiple departments?
Yeah, some of them span multiple departments. There is a communication issue. There was an accessibility issue.
In terms of?
Well, for instance, citizens want to be able to look at things. Right now, one thing we have is all our GIS maps are online, which is great. It may be a little easier to find with a little regearing of the website, but we're ahead of the game on that. But there, I believe, are different systems being used for some things in different departments, which we need to sort of rationalize. This is my bug and I will admit to it. I've become aware there are some very significant security issues that, as they say, you know, if you heard the story about the two guys camping, one of them, "Here's a bear outside. Get up, quick, run." And he gets out and runs, turns around, his friend is now putting his sneakers on him. He said, "Run, run, run. You've got to run." And so on. "You want to outrun the bear?" And he says, "I don't have to outrun the bear. I have to outrun the bear just to outrun you." And I think in terms of security these days, the trick is to be enough more difficult to target. Your risk factor goes way down. Given the fact that high school kids are buying access info on the dark web and then coming in and making things, I think it's a matter of time, not if. And I'm concerned that we do all this and look at it holistically across the entire town.
You may consider, you may want to consider if that is part of that, it's hiring someone to do a system assessment.
I think we should, yeah.
Because we can guess, but that is not my area of expertise. And so I would say, that is an area. It's a goal is to put into your budget the funds necessary to hire somebody to do a security analysis, just the way you might do it at a school.
Yeah. And that's something, as we set our goals, we will consider and figure out how to do this stuff.
Because we're, we're just, you know, it's like an automobile. When I get in the car, I just want to be able to turn it on and go. I don't worry about, you know, that CO detector, is it going to be recalled or is it the right one? I don't know about that. I just want to go. So most of us get behind the driver's seat here and do our jobs and we want equipment to go. But I think, and we've done this in, done this in other communities, is bring somebody in that can really look at it and say.
I went down a bit of a rabbit hole in security.
That's all right. That's all right.
But the notion that goals and objectives that cross all town departments.
Absolutely.
And the difference between just sort of setting it up so that department knows how they feed into our goal.
Well, and developing standard operating procedures. That's critical.
That's good. Thank you.
Any further questions from members?
Just, we did a goals and objectives assessment a year ago. And we're about to do it again. And based on the conversation that I heard here today, I think our goals and objectives all looked a little different this year than it did last year. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to leave you with something. Remember, I told you I like to plan all the, everything out. I don't know if you do this. I do this because it helps me keep track of everything. And I did it in every community I've worked in, even in Hamilton. It's one of the things I wanted. But it's just for your information. It's a town calendar for each year that lists all, you can see, you know, when the planning board submits items for, you know, zoning articles and all of that. So everybody knows what the deadlines are and then those filter into your.
That's a good idea.
Agenda. But, you know, it's always a problem knowing who's on first, you know, and if I don't have my cheat sheets, then I can't tell you.
When everybody else is on board, once you put it out, everybody else can see it.
Well, you know, you don't just say, "And this is the way it shall be." You work with the planning department saying, you know, "When can you reasonably have the zoning articles to the Board of Selectmen? When can you reasonably have your hearings?" You know, and I don't, I don't know what your town meeting process is. We have to go through a lot of, we have to go through a lot of complication and distribution of materials and obscure bylaws. We had to factor all those into the, so you didn't miss something. Can I help you in any other ways while I'm here?
Thank you, Rob, so much for.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, man. Thanks for your time.
We are continuing, hopefully, the same pace we aligned last time. We're starting, we will be in touch.
You haven't decided yet on a, I know, Ling, you responded to me about the, you haven't decided yet on that process.
What did you say?
Recruiter.
On the recruiter.
We haven't discussed that.
We haven't gotten there yet.
We've really just been focused on this one.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, I hope you get to that point soon.
We will. We will.
But we'll be in touch, Robin, very shortly. All right. Thank you very much. Nice talking to all of you.
So I think the plan is to discuss these two folks and see if we have a decision. We're ready for a decision. Anyone that, first, we all agree, that's what we're doing now. Derek, the public session, will state a public session. Anyone who would like to go first? Feel free.
I'm always happy to guess first. Both of them impressed me. I don't think that's a wrong decision to be made. The thing that struck me is, and it appeals to me in our situation in many respects, is Rob's clarity about, I get this feeling when you get schedules, spreadsheets, lists, and there's a sense of greater organization with the initial candidate. I felt a little bit more, not his approach, but it was a little more organic and succinct. And a little less clear on what the takeaways might be from that in helping us, succinct might be from that in helping us with a permanent placement for the town administrator. So at the moment, I'm leaning a bit towards the second candidate.
Next.
If I could share that I reached out to the eight references that were given to us. So Steve had given us three and Robin had given us five. I would say across the board, it was all positive. There's nothing shocking there. The references from Steve, there was nobody to whom he reported. So there was no Selectmen that were given. One was someone that reported into him. All were, the three, I would say, were a longer period of time ago. So when asking about specific accomplishments, they had to think it wasn't top of mind. They hadn't been in touch with him for a while. I would say Robins were more current. There were people whom she reported to. There were peers and direct reports. So we had a certain, more of a 360 feedback. I think, no shockers, everybody on Steve's side was very supportive of him and a lot weighed in on the personality. A very enjoyable, affable fellow who built good relationships and knew what he was doing. On Robins' side, it was, it was very positive and, you know, words like, you know, "all accomplishment-based." They did report back that she's tough but fair, that she expected a lot, but she worked with people. She could be political, but she didn't mind speaking her line, so she wouldn't shy away from anything. But it was, it was all positive with a lot of specific accomplishments and it was recent.
For either candidate, were there any words of caution or concern?
The only, one phrase was from a moderator and it was coupled with all good things. So very good, policies, procedures, good managers, put in the hours, she'll do it right, energy level was great, calm, got things done. One statement in there was, didn't make many friends. So, and when I approached that, they said she wasn't out to make friends. That it wasn't her goal to be best buds with anybody. So we said, not saying that in a negative, I would highly recommend her, but it wasn't her objective to be liked across the board. She got things done, made good decisions for the town, and listened to people, would take their feedback. So that was the harshest thing, I guess, that we said. But when they elaborated, it wasn't a negative, it was just that it was more her.
Stylistic.
It was stylistic. No negatives on either side. No, I would say, not that this is anything either, but all of them called me back. Robins' five called me back within two hours. All five of them. The other one called back within two days. And one of Robins called from Michigan to make sure he was inputted. He was traveling. So he wanted to make sure, because I had said we're going to be making a decision on Wednesday. So he said, "I'm going to leave you this voicemail message if you need me more." But I wanted to put it in. So I didn't see any negatives there. But I saw more accomplishment-driven, like quote-specific things that Robin had done. But the other one said, "Well, let me think about it. I didn't report into him. I didn't report, you know." It was tougher for them to be able to say because they didn't work as closely with him as it appeared some of these others had on Robins' side.
I got the impression that she is a doer. She's the kind of person that will roll up her sleeves and get things done depending on the job that she's got to do. I got the impression he was more polished. And maybe that means more of a politician, softer kind of interface with folks at me. You may remember that last week I said I would be tempted to hire her for the interim and hire him for the long term.
That way or the other way?
That way.
That way. You're going to say the opposite.
I said that I would be willing to hire her for the interim and hire him for the long term.
And I agreed with that last week, Robert.
By the end of the conversation, I think we, I think I changed my mind and said maybe we ought to hire him for the interim. I think I'm kind of inclined to vote for Robin at this point in time for the interim. I think we've got to be looking for a different kind of, for example, don't get caught up in thinking about who we're going to hire to be running the town for the next five or six years. Because that's not what we're looking for right now. We're looking for somebody that is just going to be able to keep this thing running, helping our department, keep things going, have somebody that they can go to for help for the next three or four or five months.
This is like a management consultant in some respects. Want them to do some work, but I kept listening for, who are we going to get the most out of for a relatively short period of time? And I was hearing what I thought were more explicit deliverables in that department from Robin and Steve. I like Steve. I like him tremendously and for a long term, I would really enjoy developing a relationship. And I have to keep reminding myself that this is, we're not looking for somebody who, if they're good, we'll ask them to stay on. That's not an option. We're in a different position in that regard. And I thought you were.
Can we even do that legally?
Oh, sure.
We could. If we hired an interim and then we wanted to keep them long term, we can do it.
Yeah, sure.
I thought there might be a legal thing about that.
It's just usually it's the individuals who will do that.
Where they are in their life.
And oftentimes where they are in terms of, if they've gone and taken and stayed retirement and they're living the 96 hours a year. And that's oftentimes the lead.
Well, that would be correct.
Two other things that jumped out at me. Steve's background is primarily, or very strongly, HR, which again leads toward the longer-term position. They're not going to be digging in and changing personnel policies as an interim. Robin's background is financial, is stronger in financial. And we're going to be working up towards, if they're here through December, it's right before the budget season. And so there's discussions about capital planning and what are you going to need to implement goals is all, you know, there's a large financial component here that I like. The other thing is, to our questions, Steve came back with questions. I would ask this, this, and this, which is good for discussion purposes. She came back with more possible approaches and specifics, which, and she raised the point about, did you ask the departments about the goals before we set them? So it looks like she's asking the people, but she also has some ideas to help guide, which is, which is good. And to your point about best practices from other towns, coming in with other possible approaches to help people think about how they might, you know, attack their work.
Just operational expert is my sense.
Yeah. So I think I'm leaning to Robin.
Anyone first, Andrew?
I did. I'm done. I was beginning.
I think I would have been well with either of them. One thing I, I talked, one thing I often, I said, if we had a financial thing in the future with the, with our full-time town administrator, I think I'd call John up and say, "If you'd like a consulting contract, come in here and help us." Because he's the guy that's got the finance background. At any rate. At any rate, I don't, I think we'll do well with either of the two that were here today as experienced town administrators. I believe that we are in a transition here, however, we made a sudden change, whatever, we're in a transition. I think that making that transition, the organization, the sense of the town, the town hall operations and that, I think that's one of our key things, perhaps more important than just implementing the sign by law or laser fish or something like that. I think those things will happen, maybe not as fast as we want, like, but, you know, especially in language, we'll see what happens. So my focus tends to be a little less on what projects would get done and how they get done in that transition. Now, in the case of the projects, as you pointed out, Steve tended to ask more questions. Anthony, to some extent, is impressive. I mean, we want somebody to go ahead with it, but there's an element of stepping back, if I'm going to do it, let me understand what I'm doing and make sure that I don't start down a bad path based on wrong idea. Robin was good, she came right back and said, "You want those that are most whole, you want this on the laser fish stuff." Almost digging in, in my mind, almost too fast, step back a minute and get the overall. So I have a little bit, perhaps, different approach on that, I think, I think one was a little bit more of a manager type, and the other was, "Let me just get started and get the hands on and I'll, you know, get all the details." And again, either one, I think, will be a great opportunity for us, and you point out very well, we're interested in their experiences, to pass them on. But from the point of view of trying to get an overall transition and a management framework, I think that Steve might be the better choice for us in this particular situation, but either one, excellent.
I'd like to share a thought that I've had today, sitting here and listening to this and listening to these folks. We tend to concentrate on what they're going to do for us, and project-oriented kinds of stuff. But we also ought to think about the fact that that person's going to be working for us, but everybody else in this building is going to be working for them. And I think we've got to make sure that whoever we put in that position is somebody that can work with the people in this building, because that's what's really going to be important over the next two or three or four months, in my opinion, is to keep things flowing smoothly, making sure that we've got somebody that our people in town hall can work with and, and become part of the team. One of the things that we've missed for six years is the team building process, okay? And we need to have somebody that can start rebuilding that team, in my opinion, okay? Having said that, I think I might be willing to vote for number one.
Did you change?
No, I don't, I'm not talking to you, so I guess I have to...
I think I did.
My, I think you raise a really good point, boy, and I think that is tremendously important. My sense is the biggest gap, or the cause of the biggest gap that we've experienced in that leadership oftentimes has been communication, what's going on in the meeting, what's happening, when is it coming on, and so on. And I think either one of them would help things tremendously by that alone, different styles in going about getting to that place. And I'm still stuck on the fact that in six months, what can someone do for us, and how much would they do here, what would be their learning curve? My sense is that Steve perhaps is prepared to have a learning curve that might be a little longer, but might develop more insights than possibly a little tender in his developing relationships, whereas there's perhaps somewhat more formulaic approach with, with Robin. But I think six months is going to go like that.
Okay.
And this, I'm struck, I think you make good points, but there's part of me that says, someone who hits the ground running, we get six months out of it, you know, this idea of course you get an exit memory, get all this sort of stuff, I have a sense of us benefiting from a much higher level of documentation about operation and procedures, getting things going that might assist us in ways that are valuable in the next step, and that, and I'm not trying to, this isn't in any way against the folks who work here, but fortunately it's only six months, everybody knows it's going to be six months. So sometimes you could, you know, that's a little different than, this is something we're going to have with us for a definitely long period of time. I would hope, and if necessary, would assume that we as select people would make it clear that we see an incredible amount of competence there, and adjustments in how people do things need to be approached with a clear starting point of respect for the leadership that's already being exhibited. And indeed, I think a lot of department heads have stepped up because there hasn't been as much of the central leadership. So it becomes more of a kind of coordinating and communicating and less of creating a top-down leadership modeling, getting everybody to sort of line up under this one TP for the six months. Our reactions to what happens over these next couple months, whichever individual we pick starts, will help inform us in picking a permanent TA. This whole experience is incredibly valuable, I'm finding already in terms of thinking about what we do for a full-time TA, that's not our job today.
I have some, a little more insight into her, only because I'm the one who spoke with the references, so I just wanted to share some things.
Please, please do.
The person in particular who had said, you know, she didn't make many friends, and by that she didn't go out of her way to be everyone's friend, she was trying to get the most out of people for people. Some of his comments were, she did great getting all the people on the same page, good at getting groups working together, she dealt with difficult labor situations and left the town in a better place. So even though she had some detail here, I wouldn't in any way imply, I took this, that she can't be the high-level person as well. One doesn't negate the other, it's not an either-or, she seems to be able to do both. And just to your point where she articulated some things that she would ask about the laser fish, you know, which areas tend to be running out of space, you know, which documents get used frequently, those are all questions that she would be asking people. She wasn't saying she had the answers, she was asking questions in the same way that Steve was, she was just being a little more specific to, I think, or that would be hopeful, in driving a group forward, knowing specifically what to look at so that people could think about it, and she would get that consensus from a group. So I don't think one says that she can't do the other, just because she had some really good ideas, I don't think it doesn't mean she can't pull groups together, because that's what these people were saying. I could read you more, but it just kept coming back to the same point, she seems to have both, not as polished or as smooth maybe as Steve, but the bottom line, the fact was, she's good at leading groups.
I think it's appropriate, I don't think it's an important thing, but we should think about it. The rate that Robin asked for is the same that she got at Hamilton, I suspect that there's no negotiation, reason for that, and I'm not sure I really want to negotiate with somebody I want for a short period of time to do a good job for us.
Do we know, is that what the rate was in?
Ninety-five.
That's what she asked for?
That's what she asked for.
Is that what was, Hamilton?
According to newspapers, that's what it was, yes.
Okay.
And somewhat less for Steve, we ought to, it's one of the factors maybe we want, it's not the key factor at all, but we ought to, I don't think there's any negotiating, I wouldn't spend time negotiating with it.